I call the Planning Commission meeting for November 10th, 2021 to order. We'll all begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Perkovich.
Excused.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Excused.
Mr. Crocker.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the amendments from the regular meeting on October 20th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Julie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Tonight's hearing, we had one public hearing and the applicant has asked for it to be withdrawn. So I'll entertain a motion to remove item number one, a conditional use permit to allow a wireless telecommunications tower at 7622 St. Clair Avenue to be removed from the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We've got to remove it from the table first. So remove.
Tabled.
It was a public hearing.
Never mind.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Okay, in old business, I'll entertain a motion to remove a miscellaneous review to amend the approved development plan for the Village on the Maple subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Is that applicant here? Will you come up and tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
Good afternoon, Mr. Cook, board. I have with me Fred Sapkari, he's the Vice President. I'm the President of the Maple and Village HOA.
Just say your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Parkinson, 7121 Maple Street.
And you're Fred, Frederick?
Yeah, 8601 Baker.
That's these guys right here.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
I just put them up there.
That's good, thank you.
Yep. Been a resident since 1978. Went to school here, graduated from Miami, came back. My wife and I have been here for 25 years. So lifelong, been a resident. My son's about to graduate in about four or five months. So anyway, what the HOA is asking for you to consider is the alternate plan that's up on the screen. We surveyed all of the residents in the development, both in writing, which you have a document before you, and just by talking with our neighbors. None of the neighbors, 100% of the neighbors, do not want the original walking path as originally proposed by Mr. Summers when he developed the neighborhood. And what we would like for the Commission to consider is the alternate, which is a revised plan, where there's a walking path around the pond with some benches and some plantings. The other reason for not wanting the original is, one, the mosquitoes are horrible in the summer, and that area is just fraught with...
Everybody's checking their phone.
I apologize. But the area is fraught with wetlands, which is ripe for mosquitoes, and it's currently, it's, you know, the area is woods and it's not being treated, which, you know, there's no complaint there. The other issue is the construction of the path itself. We provided the Commission, I believe, with aerial footage of the path, and in order to construct the path, we'd have to come much closer to the neighbors' backyard properties to get that path constructed. If we go out, then we're going to have to raise portions of the path, excuse me, incur a lot of cost to get it done. Plus, you know, to take down all the vegetation and the trees that are already there would be a great expense to the HOA. We're a very small HOA. Our budget's like 6,000 bucks, you know, so we're not overflowing with cash. The other concern that our neighbors have is safety. The neighbors don't want, basically, an open walking path to Maple Street, which is a fairly busy road. It's a cut-through down to Station Street and East Avenue. There are a lot of people that cut through there because of all the businesses. You know, I see a lot of people cut through in the morning and the afternoon, especially and at night. We don't, and we don't want the issue with other people having access to it and getting to the back of the properties of our neighbors. We've had, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but was it Fred, a year or two ago, we had a number of cars broken into. We had some other crime-related issues in the neighborhood where people were getting into garages and cars and stealing things. And the neighborhood is concerned that the pathway in its original proposal is just another avenue for people to get back there and potentially cause problems. With the alternate plan, there's still a walking path, there's a place for the neighborhood to, and, by the pond, to the extent it's enjoyable, but to enjoy the area that's there and still preserve the natural vegetation and trees that are back there. It's a nice buffer with the train, it's a nice buffer to the busy road of Station Street. And like I said, people are satisfied with the way things are. They like the view of the back of the houses. I know Fred walks his dog almost every night. I try to walk my dog every night. But, you know, it's a lot better proposal, from our point of view, to have the abbreviated plan. I know Fred, if you want to add any additional items.
The only additional thing I would say is, besides the car break-ins, a couple houses on Merkel have also been vandalized, and they're putting that path behind their houses where a lot of people don't have any cameras or anything now, because we put, that street has a lot of cameras now after the car break-ins. That would just give those people who keep vandalizing those houses an in-and-out path to do that without being seen by anybody. So that's one of the other crimes that has happened, where we're not sure who did it, but somebody keeps vandalizing a couple houses over there.
Yeah, especially this time of year, it's very dark, and none of the properties back there have bright lights back there constantly. Obviously, there's the streetlights that keep things safe, but the back of the properties, you know, I'm on Maple Street, and there's, even though I have some of the light coming from Baker and Merkel, there's not a whole lot of light in my backyard, and I don't have woods. I'm open to the other backyards and... Those are the reasons that we're requesting. I think I provided some documentation to, excuse me, Kathleen, the video footage and some other documents. So if the Commission has any questions, comments, is there any?
Thanks. Thank you. Kathy, anything from Administration?
Nothing, other than what was noted in the staff report.
Anything from the Commission members?
I have a question, based on the conversation that was just had. The original development, the costs for this should have been part of the original development. It should have been, those costs should have gone against the developer. So in any case, you shouldn't be paying for this. The developer should be paying for this.
True. That is true. The developer would pay for it, but the HOA's concern is then maintaining.
No, no, okay. I just wanted to understand, because I got the impression that...
Oh, I apologize. No, no, no.
No, no, it was all right. I just wanted to make sure that you were being credited by the developer.
Yes.
And for the costs that he doesn't put in, is he forwarding that cost to the HOA?
That you may...
I mean, he owes you a path all the way through.
Yes, but he, yes, he owes us, per what, was already approved by the city?
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not telling you.
No, I understand.
I'm just, I just want to make sure you don't get the short end of the...
No, we, no, we've had good conversations with Mr. Summers. No, we're not, no.
Okay. I wish it was Mr. Summers.
Anything else from the Commission?
Okay.
I think that what you propose here is the essence of the walking path. Is it the whole thing? No, I think you've made a good attempt at it. I think you're, you've expressed some good things here, and as far as I'm concerned, I don't disagree. So, is there anything else? Ms. Mitchell?
The only thing I would add is, in that last paragraph of the staff report, if Planning Commission were to find that the proposal met the purposes and intent, that you would add those conditions that I didn't enumerate, but they were listed in the paragraph.
That's the final paragraph?
Yes. With regard to the path material, the material of the benches, and as well as the reference to the community garden.
Because what you're proposing now, the sidewalk portion, that's concrete?
Yes.
And what's the path going back to the benches?
The materials, as suggested by the city and the Planning Commission. We would fully honor those requirements.
Okay. What about the circle in the back? Is that concrete, or is it still just the same path material?
Same path material, correct. Yes.
Okay. So Kathy, this would be a recommendation to Council that we're either, we either think it is or is not a substantial deviation from the original plan.
Correct.
Okay, so do we need a condition? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, your recommendation can include conditions, be they the ones proposed or something, you know, whatever the Commission in its judgment thinks would be appropriate. Yes.
So, I mean, I can't make the motion, so I'm kind of hoping someone... I'll entertain a motion.
Well, do we have a number of condition, they're not numbered, but do we want to call them out as numbered conditions?
Certainly can, if you, if you just want to, if you are in agreement with that.
Or can we just say, with the condition of agreement with this recommendation? Could that be the condition?
Certainly, you can reference the staff report, the final paragraph, and your recommendation includes the administrative recommendations relative to, you know, those three items.
Okay, so I move to approve with the adaption, adoption of the items in the last paragraph.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, under new business, we have a miscellaneous review to amend a conditional use permit to allow an electrical vehicle charging stations at 8470 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? I see they are. Will you please state your name and address for the clerk and tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
My name is Larry Valines. My address is 9960 Rosewood Drive in Charten. I'm here tonight on behalf of Classic Automotive Group and Classic Cadillac to talk about the charging stations that are shown on the diagram above. Cadillac has made a decision, as a brand, to be fully electric by 2035. The first of the new vehicles comes out in, the first fully electric vehicle comes out next spring. It's called the Lyric. It'll be followed by another very nice handmade large sedan. There'll be a halo car for Cadillac. It'll also be fully electric. So to be a Cadillac dealer, we have to provide them with the infrastructure that they're requesting. We didn't really have a choice as to what to do or when to do it, it's just if we're going to support the program or not.
Thank you.
Fred Hanson with Tally CN. He handles all the construction part.
Do you have anything to say?
Just kind of want to quickly go over the chargers we have is at the, starting on the west side of the building, you have, we'll have a future customer parking one that's there, and then following back along the west side as well, there'll be two that'll be dedicated for service only. And then to the south of the building, there's going to be two future for inventory. And then kind of going around to those, inside the shop, there's two EV chargers, and then a outlet, which are dedicated for service only. And then up towards the front of the building on the east side, that's a one for the new car delivery only, so that's customers wouldn't be, have been using that.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy, anything from Administration?
Mr. Chairman, we have a list of 12 conditions that we would recommend be included with any proposed approval.
Okay, and you're, we read the staff report and you're in agreement with the 12 conditions?
Yes.
Okay, I have a few questions. It's just for the Cadillacs, right? Like, a Tesla can't pull up there and charge, right? Are they, I guess I'm getting off topic a little bit, but is it a universal plug for all electric cars?
So I know a lot more about this. I'm sorry. I know a lot more about this than I did a week ago.
Okay.
So Tesla has a unique charging system. You can buy adapters for those that would be, could be used for these particular chargers, but it's not designed for a Tesla in and of itself.
Okay.
There's private chargers, there's public chargers. And so at this point, these are all intended to be private charging systems.
Okay.
There may be a point in the future where they become public, but that's not the intention today.
Because we had an applicant in the past that kind of glossed over a little bit that these are like plotted on a GPS, and as they're traveling, these stations come up. Would this come up, or is this strictly for private use, for your customers only?
This is for our private use.
Okay.
There are public chart, there are various networks out there. One of them is ChargePoint, and so you get an app, and you do get a list of all the various public charging stations that are out there, and there are people who do plan their trips based on public charging stations.
Right, right. Okay.
Ability to use them.
Thanks. Is there anything from the Commission members?
I do have a question.
Mr. Crocker.
Sure. On our second condition, I see that all of the charging stations will be on the side or real wall of the main building, and not in the front public right-of-way. Is there any additional, like, shielding from view that the city's going to require for these charging stations when they're on the sides? Or is that not something that we want?
We haven't recommended any additional shielding for this particular proposal at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Kathy, the city was working on a standard for this. Has that been achieved yet, or is that still in process?
Working on it, yes.
Working on it, okay. The only reason I bring it up is, like, for instance, I had a question about, like, item number 10, the condition. You pull into any gas station, and we have big canopies to keep people out of the rain, right? Why would we not want them to put a canopy to keep the people out of the rain when they're sticking an electric plug into a charger? Or is that, you know, I'm just trying, I'm thinking down the road, you know, eventually, the safe, you know, the gas station on the corner with 16 gas pumps, at some point in the near future, you know, eight of them are going to be gas and eight of them are going to be electric, and they're going to be out in a corner gas station under a canopy. I mean, that's like, I see this coming. I don't know if that's part of the city's view of this.
Well, I think we're making a distinction here of this being an accessory use to the, to the primary use as a dealership. This isn't a full-service EV charging...
Just because it's private.
Station.
And it's private to their customers.
Right. And also, not that they couldn't include canopies in the future if there were something, if it was, again, a full-service station, but unlike a gas station where you might be standing at the pump, you're not standing at the, out there holding that cord for an EV charger, otherwise you have way too much time on your hands.
No, that's right. You do have to plug it in. A question. So this is for your customers only, Cadillac customers only. Is it people driving cross-country in a Cadillac, would this come up on their system to see that they could charge at your facility? Cadillac customers?
Yeah. Right now, the only one it potentially would be, that would be the future one that's going up in the customer parking area, because that will be tied to, like, an EV system and data system, so that one may have the potential to be able to show up.
Okay. But it wouldn't come up on the system of a non-Cadillac car?
Very good question.
I'm just wondering, you know, because, because when, when does the line start to change from being a private use by only their customers here to being used by their customers all over versus it coming up and being available to everybody? I mean, at some point, that line seems to be not real clear. I don't have any problem with this at all, but I'm just trying to see, envision how this develops over time, you know?
I don't think you're alone.
Oh, okay.
Anything else from the Commission? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the 12 conditions.
Second. Julie, please.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Crocker.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes. Thank you. We have a preliminary site plan of a storage facility at 7868 Reynolds Road. Please state your name and address for the clerk, please. Thank you.
Yeah, don't do that. Thanks, Larry. One more. Once again.
All right. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Good evening. My name is Jason Lynn Scott. I'm with Stein Investment Group. Address is 5607 Glen Ridge in Atlanta, Georgia. And I have our engineer with us as well.
Ralph Trubugan, the Mannick Smith Group, 1160 Dublin Road, Suite 100, Columbus, Ohio.
Thanks for your time tonight. This is a, an application or a site plan review for self-storage use. Just, I'm just going to give you some quick background on who we are, what we do. Try to keep it, I'll try to keep it brief. We're based in Atlanta. We do commercial real estate, own commercial real estate, sort of all over the East Coast, Southeast and East Coast, epicenter in Atlanta. We're in Florida, and the Carolinas, Virginia, Ohio, and Michigan, and sort of primarily focus on retail, office, and self-storage projects. We're a, we're a family company. We operate and own all of our own real estate, so any of the things we build like this, this is our facility, we own it, we operate it, and it's our brand that's on the, on the project. This particular type of product, this self-storage, we've, we've been doing for maybe 13, 14 years. We've done more than 50 of these, like this type of project, and operate all those under our own brand. We've recently done a few, we're working on several in Ohio. We're in Columbus, we're in North Olmsted, working in Canton, Massillon, of course, here, and a few other markets we're working on, too. So we really like being in Ohio, and we've, our first facility opened up in Columbus, and then the second in North Olmsted has been, has been great. If you've been over that way, there's, where the old Toys R Us was, if you're familiar with that, on Lorraine Road, we bought that Toys R Us and basically built an entire new building around it, reused the existing box that was there, but built around it, so it looks like a brand-new building if you were to look at it. That's been very successful over there. So our approach at these is generally to, we come from a retail background, so these projects for us are more retail in nature. It's a retail product. Our customers are the community, so it's a, it's a consumer product. So it's not your sort of traditional, what some folks think of as industrial use with self-storage, where there's a chain-link fence and a bunch of roll-up doors everywhere and, you know, maybe the guy with the cigar, but it's, it's different. You know, this is, it's a nice product. It's a Class A product. It's something you feel really good going to. The architecture is very nice, mostly brick. We take a lot of care with our storefronts and our signage and how everything looks, and how the building feels when you walk in it. The office is, it's approximately 900 to 1,000 square feet. We have two employees there. When you walk in our office, you, and if you, if you happen to go by North Olmsted, please feel free to walk in and check it out. If you walk in our office, it feels a little bit more like a retail or a hotel lobby. It feels nice. We have a sofa, we have free coffee and water, and, you know, employees, and it's, it's a really nice feeling. So that's, that's kind of our program, is to have, to bring that type of product to the market, and we've had a lot of success with it, and we love doing it. This particular site is really attractive to us because the market here is actually undersupplied. We do a really thorough analysis of our supply and demand saturation to figure out where, where there are areas that are undersupplied, and we have, you know, I won't get into it, we have all kinds of methodologies, and we have some software we've developed that help, help us do that and evaluate that. So this particular site, there's, there's an undersupply of this product here. We then generally look for sites that maybe aren't the best retail sites, but maybe they're in a good retail corridor. So, you know, you don't need the pin corner where Walgreens might want to be or Starbucks, right? Because we're not a convenience, you know, you don't drive by and turn in and get your coffee. This is more of a destination, so, but we want to be in that corridor where people see us every day and they know we're part of the community. So this is the, this is that exact type of site, right? It's difficult to access, it's been vacant for a long time because it doesn't have perfect visibility for retail or access, and it's up against the train tracks, you know, between that and Quaker State. So it's a great site for it. The use really, it doesn't generate very much traffic, it's an extremely low intensity use. Generally, we, we have success going next to residential areas because it's a good buffer between residential and commercial, because we don't have a lot of activity. We have no outside dumpsters, there's not a lot of traffic. We generally generate something between 12 and 18 trips a day in and out of the property, so there's, there's very little traffic and very low intensity. So that's the kind of thing that will happen here, you know, it's, I think the access here is tough for retail, so it's nice for this type of use at this location by the bridge. So, and if you kind of see the site plan, these are, I'll just sort of walk you around it real quick. Our site plan is, you know, we sort of oriented where, we pushed the building all the way up to the front, which I know is also what's in Mentor's Code for this district as well. We want the visibility, we want the building up on the road. So the building's pushed up as far as we can here, you know, we sort of have a pinch point, obviously, with the property. All these buildings are one-story buildings. The larger buildings you see, the three larger buildings, are all climate-controlled self-storage buildings, so those are internally accessed. So you go through a glass automated storefront door, so similar to like when you walk into the grocery store. You can see those there. So these are, those buildings are all climate-controlled buildings, so all the storage is on the inside. It's humidity and climate-controlled. If you, if you wouldn't mind flipping back to the site plan for one moment? Thank you. And then the sort of connection between those two big buildings at the top is actually a 14-foot-high covered roof, so that, that just connects the two buildings, but there's loading doors under that roof, so you can load under, under there. Well, generally, in climates like this, we sometimes put heaters and things like that in there, too, to keep folks, keep folks comfortable. So, and before I got there, I should have started with, when you enter the site, you see the parking, there's not very much parking because we really don't generate very much traffic. That's our office, that's where our employees are, that's where a new customer would come in, sign a lease. If you go down to the left, where you see those two, those two cars, they're just behind a gate, and then on the top side of the building, on the right, there's another gate. So the entire back portion of the property is, is actually gated, and those gates are sort of the, the black aluminum picket, looks like wrought iron, that's what those gates are. They either open, they're either slide gate, or they're open, they open like this, it just depends on, you know, how the site lays out. Customers have to have their own unique PIN that they give us when they sign a lease to access through the gates, so we know who's coming and going, and customers feel really comfortable with that, because you get behind the gate and the gate closes, and you feel good back in the, going to whichever building you'd like to go to. The rest of the site, the balance of the site is fenced, because like, we like the site to be enclosed, and that's one of the things we want to talk to you guys about relative to the code for this industrial district. The back left portion there, where you see those parking spaces, those deep parking spaces, those are really recreational vehicle parking spaces, particularly this area generally, you know, boats, those types of things, to get, get those things out of folks' driveways, sort of relieve some pressure on some of the local HOAs. But that's what those are, and, and we keep those in really great condition. People always ask us about that. You know, we have no interest in having a junky thing sitting there with a flat tire, we have no interest in having a junky thing sitting there with a flat tire. That's not what our customers want to see either. And there's not a lot of spaces here, so this would be something that, these are boats, trailers, generally a car, something like that, maybe an RV, nothing too big here, those types of things. No commercial vehicles allowed. So this isn't like a commercial operation where someone parks their dump truck or something like that. These are all person, it's a personal self-storage. The smaller strip building there on the bottom is an outside-access building. So that building, you can actually access the units from the outside, which is more of your traditional self-storage product. We add that to have that product. We don't have a lot of it here, but we have some. So if a customer wants that, we do have it available. I think the only thing I'll mention real quick, I'm trying to go quickly because I don't know how much detail you guys want, but I'm happy to give you as much as you like. Security is paramount, so the site's really well-lit. Of course, they'll have a photometric plan that meets the city's code, but we're really focused on that and having appropriate lighting. All the entrances and exits have security cameras, which are monitored, so we know who's coming and going. Customers feel good about their belongings. Hopefully, I got everything. I'm sure there'll be some questions and any of the conditions or technical details.
Sure.
Please feel free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Tobruggan with Mannick and Smith Group. Just want to add a little bit to what Jason said. First, on the parking. On the staff comments, they mentioned minimum parking about 23, not counting the bike parking, as Jason said. Very low trips here, so comfortable with the 10 spaces shown. There's room for, down the road, if that's not enough, to add parking fairly easily just by adding striping parallel to the building. Outdoor storage, as Jason mentioned, on the north, the west, east side of the site where the gates are, that's aluminum picket fence, black. And then on the north side as well, that is the same type of fence that comes back to Building B, the second building there. Behind Building B is chain-link fence, and we're looking at being six-foot outdoor storage there. If it really needs to be screened, could add some privacy slats. There's an interlocking variety of that that could be put into the fence. Adorable and nice-looking. But, you know, that's industrial behind there. There's an existing tree buffer. Even those industrial uses behind there have some outdoor storage already, boats and cars and other things, you know, pertain to their business. Mechanical units, no mechanical units on the roof. So they'll be ground-mounted and be screened if they're visible. Landscaping, this plan shows that we've pushed Building A back, the front building, and added the foundation planting along the front, and then added some additional shrubs and mounding along the right-of-way as requested by this staff as well. We're open for any additional questions.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from administration?
I guess, tagging on to the comments with regard to the conditions, two comments. First, the building floor plans, if you could switch to that. I think the staff was under the understanding that the three large buildings you could access with your car, and it doesn't sound like that's the case.
Right. The way they're designed right now, you can't, you can't go into those with your car. That's right. You load those from the outside.
So what do you, how does the storage on the interior work? And then, and then what are you bringing in there that you wouldn't need a car to get into the space, I guess?
So the way this, maybe you could zoom in to the lower part of that building? Might be the easiest place. The lines clear up a little bit.
These are, these are.
They're not coming through very clear, but, so, let me try one more time. It's, there's something with the projection here, but the lines aren't showing up.
Hold on one second. Jonathan, they're not getting anything on the monitors up at the...
They just come on and off.
It's a problem up here. It's not him.
No, it's not.
Do you remember when we met? It's something over here.
All right, well, that's all right.
It's okay. We can look up the screen.
Okay.
All right.
We're at the first row.
That's what you were.
Okay, so there's, just while you're getting those diagrams, it looks like you have a series of five-foot corridors.
That's right.
That break up the space internally.
Correct.
So how do you get the six boxes of old records in the back of my, my car into, down the five-foot, you know, in through the door and the five-foot corridor to a, I guess it's like a storage locker space, right?
Yep. So essentially here...
Overhead door?
Yes, overhead door.
Okay.
That's right. Everything's sort of white hallways, white overhead doors. The, when you walk in where that arrow is at the bottom, sure.
Yeah.
Walk in here. This is a automated sliding glass door, so you punch your code in, the door opens for you. You see how this is sort of squared off, and it's 10 feet here? So this is what we consider our loading lobbies. So we have carts here. So you have, we have branded carts. So you can roll that out to your car, which would be parked right here where this arrow is.
Uh huh.
You're parked right at the door. You grab one of these carts. You put your boxes on the cart.
Stuff on.
That's right.
You have the carts, so you distribute your stuff.
That's right. So then you would walk down the five-foot corridor, and you're going to either go left, and your unit's going to be right here. There's a line right here that's not showing up.
I understand. I understand.
Got it.
There's a series of internal corridors.
Correct.
Five foot wide.
Yes.
You push your cart down. You get to an overhead door. You put your stuff in.
Correct. Correct. And there's various unit sizes, five-by-five, five-by-10s, 10-by-10s, 10-by-15s, 20s, and 30s. So the largest unit in this facility is a 10-by-30.
And just speaking off the cuff, none of these are dead-end corridors.
Correct.
The corridors loop around.
Correct.
There's exits.
Good question.
Exits at the appropriate distances between, you know.
Yes.
So that you have, that you meet the fire requirements or the safety requirements for building exit.
Correct. And it's also, I'll add on to that, there's another reason we do these multiple buildings instead of one big building.
Yeah.
Because you really want customers' travel distances to not be very far. We try and keep it under 200 feet. And you sort of, we study that. So you want to have multiple access points, lots of ways for people to get in and out, and easy to their units. You don't want people to walk far.
So we can envision lots of stuff being stored. What don't you allow to be stored in this building?
So we don't allow anything that's flammable. We don't allow any kind of hazardous materials, those kinds of things. All those things are in the lease. You can't store, you can't roll a motorcycle in here because it has flammable materials in it, right? Gasoline. So those are the types of things that you're not allowed to store. It's household goods, generally.
Okay. So when you say flammable, you mean, you mean...
Fuel.
Fuel, right. You don't mean, I mean, paper's flammable, yeah, so.
That's right. Yes.
So, all right.
And it is a fully sprinkled building.
And the building is fully sprinkled, okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
That was one of my questions, too, just to get a nature, a feeling of how this works. So I have an extra refrigerator at home, and I have a truck. Can I put a refrigerator in one of these?
Uh, yes.
I mean, if I can get it off my vehicle and get it on your cart, right?
Sure.
You have carts big enough to move something like a refrigerator.
That's right.
All right. All right. I'm getting the picture now.
Yes, absolutely.
What this is.
And that's one of the things our managers are trained to see. They sort of watch people move in and out. I mean, they have cameras. So if you just roll back there, and our manager's in the office, they can actually watch you for a minute and see what you're letting...
The corridors are cam...
Yes. And we're sort of training our managers because we want them to see what people are doing, right?
And, and that's what all these buildings are, are basically that. That you have a couple buildings that have overhead doors, which you're not, but you're not putting cars in those.
Correct.
You're just having an exterior access to those. And the little dotted areas, not on this, not on this site plan, but on the black-and-white site plan, that's the mechanical systems. Those little dotted area up there.
You talking about here?
Yeah, up a little.
Oh, here?
Yeah, there.
Those are canopies, yes, sir. So those are, those...
So where are the mechanical equipment that's ground-mounted?
This isn't, they're not shown here. We have, our MEPs will have to decide where we put those, but in, I can, pretty degree, high degree of certainty tell you where they're going to end up. They'll end up here, the backside of this building for this building, probably back here for this building. And this one, I would imagine, we're going to need to put them right here.
All right.
This is a 45-foot drive-out. It's really wide. There's plenty of room.
Okay.
And then these are residential-style units, like you have at your house.
Right.
They're small.
Question of the city. I would, has the fire marshal kind of reviewed this, or is he waiting to see what?
Yeah, we need, we're definitely going to need more detail on the interior. I mean, I understand what you're saying. It makes sense. But we'll need a better layout, I know, for the, for the comfort level of the, of the fire chief.
And I'm not so much focused on the interior right now, but in terms of fire lanes, he's limited as to where a fire lane, like this building down here. He only has about maybe 40% of the exterior directly accessible to a driveway. Is the fire marshal going to, I mean, sometimes the fire marshal likes to be able to drive around a building, even if it's not the developed roadway. He wants to be able to access, and this is, these are storage buildings. Does he have a concern about not being able to travel around these buildings with fire lanes?
The lanes themselves are wide enough. We did not have the information with regard to the gates on the preliminary, which he's going to want to see, and how to access those gates.
And that's, yeah. And again, I'm just probing. I mean, it's preliminary. So, I mean, for instance, the building at the top of that building, not that one, the one next to the west, he can't, there's not a fire lane around that building. He can't get to the back. He can't get, you know, he can't get to the north side. He can't get to the west side with a vehicle. He can't get a fire lane around it. Maybe that's okay. I was interested to know if the fire marshal had reviewed this for fire lanes. Same with the building down here, which is even less. There's only about 40% of that exterior that's accessible to the drive or a fire lane. Would the fire marshal want to have more access around the building?
Well, the fire chief has looked at it, and again, he's, he's waiting to see more information with the next submission.
I don't want to make a big issue out of it. I just, I was thinking, because these are storage buildings, you know?
Well, certainly.
Industrial, he may want to have more access to the exterior of these buildings.
He wanted, yeah, he definitely wants more information with regard to access and flow throughout the buildings and around the building.
And this is just a preliminary site plan.
It's preliminary, so I'm just asking to see if there was a response yet.
I got a question. What if a unit goes unpaid? We're not going to see auctions here, are we?
No. It's not as, some people are always asking about storage wars. It's not as, it's not as interesting as that.
Right, right. That's not happening here, right?
No, it's not as interesting as that. And it's, essentially what happens is when someone doesn't pay their, their rent, you know, go through the process and notices, and there's legal requirements in the state for how that happens.
Sure.
You essentially lock their unit with their own lock, so they can't get into it until their bill's paid. Nine times out of 10, people pay their bill. When they don't, the way auctions work now, which won't surprise any of you, is it's all online. So basically, we have a service that comes, and they go to the unit. They have a, they have a camera. You can get over the top of the unit with a camera. Camera, it gets sold online. It's done. It's over. And that person who buys it comes and picks it up. It's really, it's very seamless.
Okay.
So you just, these walls don't go all the way to the ceiling?
Correct.
So, I mean, that's an interest that...
Yes. And that's important. And I'll...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They don't, the walls do not go all the way to the ceiling. And that's important. And I'll tell you why. So inside the ceilings are 10-foot-8 approximately. The units go up eight feet, okay? So there's a gap above of a little over two feet. And what that is, is for airflow and all those things. It's also for sprinkler separation.
Right.
Right? So we can have sprinkler separation for, for the spread, for the water. Now, it's also, so folks, we also have a metal top that you can't see, obviously, because it's a roof to the units unless you're inside the unit. And that's there so that folks can't store stuff over the eight-foot, right? Because you don't want folks going...
Or climb over the wall and...
Exactly.
Borrow their neighbors' stuff.
Right. Or store all the way up to the sprinkler head, you know?
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah. So they are, it's a, like, so a 10-by-10 unit is 10-by-10 by eight.
Okay. So you've read the staff report, and you're okay with all the proposed conditions then?
Uh, yes. We have. I think we had...
This is preliminary, right?
Preliminary.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mitchell.
I'm just, I'm just rereading this. And it looks like the information we referenced with regard to the outdoor storage, it didn't carry into the conditions like it should have, so I, I would ask that that be added to the conditions. I have a statement on page three that's at the top of the page that basically says, "Any proposed open storage area shall meet the requirements set forth in 116104H, outdoor storage in industrial districts." I would recommend that that be added as a condition. It was just an oversight. It should have been carried into the, into the list, and it wasn't.
Condition 12.
And I guess, with that point, if I, we could have the applicant elaborate on that because, right now, as they're proposing it, the proposed fencing does not meet the requirements of that particular section.
Sure. So if, so what we're talking about, just so we're on the same page, is this area here, and the fencing would be, it was a little, I think that the code here is maybe not black and white for this type of use. So I think we do need to kind of understand, if they add that to, as a condition, what it means. So...
Could you, could you clear the, could you clear it up?
I could ask a question if that's easier. Okay. From my interpretation of the code, is it, it seems like it's meant for sort of screening storage of materials for an industrial use. And it's an eight-foot opaque fence, or masonry fence, or any type of opaque fence, vinyl fence, that completely encloses that storage area. So if we were to do that here, for example, I feel like this is completely enclosed because the entire site is gated. We would like to do, we traditionally do a six-foot fence around the project and around the vehicle storage as well. It just feels, it's a consumer product, so folks don't, eight-foot fences don't feel good. They feel like, more like a jail, right? It just doesn't feel as good. So we typically like to do six-foot fences. We would traditionally not do an opaque fence back here. We can add some opaque features to the fence if that's what the city would prefer. We're happy to do that. In terms of completely enclosing it, I didn't know what that meant. So if that meant literally this would be an opaque fence surrounding this area, which would be, I think, not consistent with the operation of the business. So I was trying to figure that out. So I think that was my question, unless I'm misinterpreting the, the text.
Ms. Mitchell?
Okay, so the particular requirements, we weren't aware of the gate or the fencing completely around. That was one of our questions. And I think we would agree that if you enclosed the front of those spaces, then the access would be pretty difficult. You do have the gate at the front. The whole idea is to provide a screen to the public right-of-way and to adjoining properties. So you, as the planning commission, can approve a height other than eight feet if you feel it's sufficient. The fact that these are RVs and boats, I don't know. I don't know that six feet is sufficient, depending on what's out there. But I do feel that it's pretty clear in item 116104H1B that the material of the, of the enclosure shall be solid in some way. So if, if they can't meet that requirement, then the only alternative would be to request, to vary from that. So I think that, that particular item is pretty clear. You do have the ability to modify the fence height, and it does indicate it has to be secured by a gate, which they're now showing it is. So...
Okay.
So you said that portion of the gate, that was a chain-link back there?
Yes.
And did I not hear you talk about the slats that weave in there?
That's what we were, we were suggesting. We typically do like a black powder-coated chain-link fence on the rear of the property. And we were suggesting that we could do vinyl inserts here to make it opaque.
And that run on the back, back there, you could do a, you could do that run in eight feet there?
Sure. Sure. We'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Varga?
That's industrial property to, immediately to the west, right?
Correct. And...
Industrial zoning.
Yes. And Enterprise Parkway is viewable from, if you, if you zoom out, it's, it is viewable.
Well, and so you're able to, you're planning on storing things that would be, not only would they be taller than six feet, it would be taller than eight feet.
Yes, it probably, it could be, for sure.
I don't know that making it eight feet changes the outcome because if you put it, you put a boat on a trailer, it's going to be higher than eight feet. So the question is, you know, and we can't, I don't think there's reasonable, reasonably be higher than even eight feet, you know? I mean, so the question is, is that an issue with the code for them to store those vehicles that are going to be taller than, obviously taller than six feet, they're going to be taller than eight feet, too. So I don't know that the size of the fence makes it, well, you could make eight feet across the back, like you said. They're going to, the stored materials are going to be visible from our side.
The minimum height of eight feet.
Yeah.
I mean, you could do a 10-foot chain-link. But I don't know how tall, I mean, an RV's not going to be, I mean, I guess some boats on a, on a trailer would be, but most would not be.
And as you know, when we were crafting this regulation in 2020, we looked at some examples around the city. There are definitely outdoor storage areas that have screen walls that are significantly tall and are also very attractive. It just is a matter of how you do it. And also, looking for that screen wall to be consistent with, and at least compatible with, the building that are on site. So I think there's, there's different options, and maybe at the final plan, they can submit some options for you to look at. But I just wanted to bring that up because, again, it wasn't, the condition needs to be reinforced here, and then just their comments on what they were proposing, so.
So let me, so maybe the direction from the planning commission is to relook at that. Maybe we consider making this portion that's adjacent to the neighboring property eight-foot, and make it opaque, and suggest some materials that we would use for that? Is that okay?
Uh huh. Sure.
Okay. So I need to go back with my team and make sure, you know, we've suggested some things that make sense.
Come up with some ideas.
Yes.
Brainstorm.
Great.
Mr. Varga?
Yeah, you need to show, too, with your next presentation, these mechanical spaces. And, you know, you're spending a lot of money on brick and nice materials. and, you know, you're spending a lot of money on brick and nice materials. I don't want to see a, a big fan unit or a compressor sitting, you know? Think about enclosing that in a wall or a vision or, or, you know, you're going to have to protect it from the traffic so they don't bump into it because it looks like some of this is going to be near traffic. And also, if you're sticking it back by the detention pond, you know, you need to be able to drive a truck back there to get the service. Want to see the, the full thought about how some of these surface-mounted. And if they're big fan units with ducts, that, you know, the ducts are going to be visible going up and into the...
They're not, yeah. And actually, and honestly, you can picture the unit you have outside your house, it's the same thing, same setup. So, the, the one nice thing about these facilities is they're very energy-efficient. You only have two doors, not a lot of activity going out. So, the air conditioning load, not very large, so you're probably picturing a big commercial building, you got a big fan and a duct. It's actually a residential unit.
So, more, more illustrations next time to show us the extent of this.
I'll, I'll bring photos of our other facilities that show the units and the screening we do.
Bring some pictures of the, from, from them up here. I know you're from Atlanta, but you'll, you'll, you'll use less air conditioning here than you, than you would use more heat. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion with a 12th condition.
Okay, well, entertain it, propose approval with 12 conditions.
Second. And the 12th one being...
Reference to...
Page three.
Page three. Julie Cullor.
Mr. Teaven.
Yes.